If everybody would please stand and I'll ask Commissioner Lowery to say the pledge and Reverend Martin will pray for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us bow and pray. Most heavenly, most gracious God, we just come to you with praise and with thanksgiving. And we invite you into this meeting today, Father. We ask, Father, that let your business be done in decent and in order. We ask, God, that you would just allow the leaders to lead this city to higher heights. We ask everyone, God, on this sound, on my name and your name, that, God, that you would just help this city grow closer and closer together. We ask you, Father, that you would come and you give us the strength that we need to stand in these days. We ask you, Father, right now, in my name of Jesus, God, that you would bless this meeting. You say where two or three are gathered in your name, you are in the midst. We thank you for being in the midst, in something that we pray. Amen.
Amen. We'll call this August 20th meeting of the Port St. Joe City Commission to Order. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of regular minutes of August 6th and a workshop of August the 8th. Everybody have a chance to review those, any changes or additions or subtracts?
Motion to approve?
The motion by Commissioner Ashbrook to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Langston. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Okay. Building Department, everybody's got their update from the Building Department as of today, and they're still issuing permits. Single-family structures are coming up fast, and I'd like them too, but we are getting some. The PSJRA update, Mr. Ashbrook, we haven't got anything new on that?
None at this time. We have a meeting at noon Tuesday, oh, yeah, Tuesday, September 3rd, September 3rd.
Okay. All right, moving along, we're down to Mr. Attorney, if you will take the lead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Item number one is ordinance five, ordinance number 560, Marina Small-Scale Amendment. Ultimately, it will be before this commission for consideration of first reading and advertising. I do know that Mr. Ray Brier is here, if the commission has any specific questions relating to this proposed ordinance.
Gentlemen, any questions? Concerns?
Yeah, I have one question. I'm not sure now is the time to ask, if you'd help me out with this. Are we getting into the specifics of the plans at this point? I know when we speak about the PUD, the actual agenda, if we get into the drawings and all, and I have a question about the submitted drawing.
I want to refer to Mr. Anderson to that, but at this point, this is for first reading, so it will not be formally adopted. Mr. Brier, would you like to address that question?
Yeah, and with this, the small-scale land use amendment, this is just the land use itself, this is the change, actual land use from industrial to mixed-use. And then the next item is the PUD.
Okay, and that's what I was thinking, I can move on to the next item. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion for first reading of ordinance 560, Marina Small-Scale Amendment?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Ashbrook?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lowery. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Mr. Attorney?
Ordinance number 560, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida by and through procedures required for small-scale amendments pursuant to the authority under state statute sections 163.3187, specifically changing partial ID number 04594-015R, 04596-100R, 04596-000R, and 04596-060R from industrial to mixed-use, providing for appeal of any conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Next, before the commission, is ordinance number 561 of the Marina PUD, it is for consideration for motion for first reading and advertising. I do know that there's a representative from the St. Joe company here in the audience as well, if the commissioner would like to hear from them.
I do think we probably have some questions, so, Mr. Murphy, I think, are you here representing the St. Joe? If you wouldn't mind coming up, we might have a couple of questions for you. And you sign in too, if you don't mind. Good running. Okay, guys. Commissioner Hopkin, you had a question?
Yeah, I'll reference you to page 41, the conceptual drawing. I do appreciate the St. Joe company recognizing that Clifford Sims Park is all by the city and referenced on this map. But my question is, on the drawing, it almost looks as if there's no parking, and talks about a gateway, and there's some confusion as to what is a gateway? And from the turnaround that you have drawn on Marina Drive, which is also owned by the city? What is the plans or the idea at this time as far as for traffic to consider be continuing down Clifford Sims Park?
Sure. A gateway for us is just an entrance, it's a pretty broad term that says it's the entrance to what we consider the Marina District down there, so it's a gateway, it's an entrance way, it's not a gate. It is just purely an entrance way that we hope is a great grand entrance into there. As far as the roundabout, I don't know if it's drawn on there well enough, but it would just be an entrance into Clifford Sims Park like today, so in other words, for traffic flow, I think a roundabout will make it a lot easier for folks to come in, and whether they're going to a hotel, restaurant, big skews or Marina Ward to Clifford Sims Park, I think it makes the traffic flow a lot easier than it is today, so that's the idea of the roundabout. I don't know if the entrance is drawn on there well enough, but we can surely change that and make sure, but the idea was to have the entrance into the park same as it is today.
Okay, thank you.
And that's exactly the issue I had, Pat, that it just didn't appear there's any road off that roundabout into Clifford Sims Park. It looked like landscaping, so I guess you can assure us there will be a road there?
Yeah, I can assure you there will be a road there.
Okay, that's...
I'm not an artist, but I can assure you that we can have this updated with the road.
Yeah, that's, I think that satisfies me, for sure. Okay, guys, any...
Are you in agreement that Marina Drive, that road, is owned by the city of Port St. Joe?
Well, as far as I understand it, I believe it is.
Yeah, it was in the PUD documents, I'm...
Yeah, listen. I do have one question, Mayor. I've noticed that you guys are increasing the total wet and dry boat slips in item number 1 to 300, and it looks like it's, what is it currently, 190? Is that what we're reading?
I think it's 190, yes.
What, is there a, do you have a breakdown? And the reason why I say that is because I'm more concerned about the dry storage on the one space per 15 boats, equalling to around at 20 spaces?
Yeah, I think right now we're looking at a dry barn, too. And a lot of this is conceptual, you know, we want to make sure that we rebuild, we rebuild large enough for the demand down here, so I think it's 200, but as far as, I think in the conceptual plan, we have over 120 to 160 parking spots in the conceptual plan, so I think we've covered it. But if we want to reduce that from 15 to 1 to 5 to 1 or something like that, I think we're comfortable with that, because for us, we're operating a Marina, and we want to have enough parking spots to be able to operate a Marina, so clearly, we're not going to build something that, you know, doesn't do any good to not have parking for our owners and guests for Marina, so...
And you're absolutely right, I mean, it's your, it'd be your issue, you know, at the end of the day, but...
So I think we'd be comfortable if y'all are comfortable with going at the 5 to 1 instead of 15 to 1.
Yeah, I'd be very comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'd feel a lot better about that.
Sure, absolutely.
And so we can have that, if a motion made would be contingent on that change...
Absolutely. We'll probably provide more than that, but I think that's a good starting point, for sure.
Okay. That moves it up to 60 from 20.
Yeah, it's just for the barn, though, right? We also have wet, so...
Yeah, that's right. Any other questions for him? Patrick, any more questions?
I'll tell everything.
Okay. Entertain a motion to have first reading of ordinance 561, the Marina PUD, with the provision that the parking density is changed to 5 to 1 based on the dry barn. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Lowery, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ashbrook. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All in the same sign? Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Ordinance number 561, an ordinance of the city of Port St. Joe, Florida relating to and amending the zoning code, amending the city of Port St. Joe zoning map, designating and establishing the Port St. Joe Marina Plan Unit Development Zoning District, adopting certain regulatory requirements for the Port St. Joe Marina Plan Unit Development Zoning District to supersede requirements in the city of Port St. Joe zoning code, providing for appeal of any conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anything else?
No, Mayor, that is all that I have at this time, thank you.
Okay. All right, next item under old business is the NERDA grant application, which is Northwest Florida Water Management District Grant Agreement with the city to construct some type facility that will help clean water before it goes into our bay. So, Mr. Anderson, you want to take the lead on that?
Yes, sir, Mayor. The NERDA grant is referred to, the city staff has been working with DEP and the Water Management District for some years to put this plan together. At this point, we have an application before you just begin the process. The main focal point is water quality. It also has elements of school water, school water master plan for the whole city, and some stump school water improvements, specifically to the main quarter of town that leads into 16 streets down approximately on the other side of 20th Street. This process will just begin, the modeling process, and begin the second plan. We also have Brett Seifer's here from the Water Management District, along with his staff, Paul Ford, to help us answer any questions we may have.
Okay, gentlemen, with that being said, questions or concerns about the grant agreement?
I, I was reading, and they said, um...
Get a little closer.
Fund, they said $775,000, and that's what we're getting, supposed to be getting, but do we have to match this?
No, sir, there is no grant to water state on this, 100% grant to water state.
Okay, so no, the city doesn't have to pay anything toward this?
No, sir, I'm not aware of any, any tax...
Not all, sir. That's all, you got it? Anyone else? Got it? Anyone from the audience might speak to us. Come right up.
Hi, Kristy McElroy, Port St. Joe, 1311 Rupert Avenue. First, I want to thank DEP and Northwest Florida Water Management through this process. They allowed us as neighbors and concerned citizens to have a bit of input and to give context to what our concerns were. So I think a lot of that has been addressed, for example, no commingling of funds, this is to do water quality, not have anything to do with infrastructure for sports complex, and the public meetings. I would ask that the city understand that because we're talking about water quality, and many of our residents make their living off that water, that we make sure that we have these public workshops in a time when the fishermen, the environmentalists, people that work, are able to attend those meetings. There's some other things in here that, you know, I think are important, conflict of interest, it's important. It's important that everybody is focused on what the mission is and the purpose is, and not co-mingle their thoughts or their opinions, that this is all factual. So I did do another quick markup on this document. The main thing is, as far as the workshops go, it says, for example, the city will have workshops. I feel that shall is more important, because just like in other parts of this document, shall represents an obligation and a duty for the people that are responsible. So some minor tweaks, I spent a lot of time looking at this and putting forth, and again, I want to thank DEP and Northwest Florida Water Management for receiving it in the way that it was intended to be received, and that is only as citizens that are concerned.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, we do have Mr. Seifer here, if he does want to speak on it, we do have...
Yeah, come on, fellas, whoever, all you want.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I just want to reiterate, you know, from the district's perspective, we're proud of the relationship that we have with you, that we have with your staff, working on projects like this. We see that this is one singular but important step in a long-term goal of the preservation of St. Joe Bay, and that's our, that's our goal, we realize that that's your goal as well. This is part of that, I think a huge part of it is also that's formal planning, you know, that's there, but, you know, but in the end, we want you to be proud of it, the project that you come up with, we're glad for the public workshops will be there with you as well to help work through those. But again, thank you for your partnership, this is going to be, I think, a great project, you know, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, Mayor, I just want to say that I've known Brett for a while now, and just want to appreciate you coming down and traveling down today, means a lot, appreciate the relationship we have as well. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Yes, the generosity of Northwest Florida Water Management has looked out for us and our bay for a long time, and we certainly appreciate it, and I can assure the public that we'll abide by the grant from A to Z, workshops will be held, they'll be held at a time that everyone can feel like they can attend if they would like to. So, that being said, any public comments from the commission? Okay, is there a motion to accept the grant agreement with Northwest Florida Water Management? There's a motion by Commissioner Ashbrook. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hopkin. Any more further discussion? Anyone in the audience? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Great, great, thank you, everyone. Okay, under new business, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir. First item we have is a reference to the Paces Foundation Phase 2. They presented to you a traffic study, they're trying to get an indication as to the feel from the board before moving forward with a forward development order. I think Commissioner Ashbrook was talking today about it.
Yeah, you guys, I saw an opportunity when the state came down with some housing money, some housing initiative money after the storm, and I actually called Mark DeMoss, and I said, "Listen, you guys have a Phase 2 project, there's a $50 million deposit in Tallahassee, why don't you guys reach into it?" And they already had a project going on in Panama City and hadn't really thought about that, so, you know, they were worried that if they had to provide that second entrance, that it would be cost prohibitive and that they would not be able to get it. I asked them to, "Please don't think that way, and come back to us with an ask," and I think that's where we are today. If we can get this thing and not require that second entrance, as per the traffic study that's been performed, I think it'll be a lot smoother process. We're all here wanting to get housing, there are 32 pre-approved families waiting to move in on a waiting list now, I'd hate to tell those people sorry. So here's an opportunity for us to use someone else's money to help our citizens. I'd just like to know from this board if we would all be willing to relook at our request last time about having an additional entrance, and I believe possibly too, the parking requirements, and Rick, if you wanted to come up, is that all right, Mayor, if he wants to come in?
Yes, I'd like to, you know, if anyone has questions for him, but you still got the floor, so go ahead. And then I'll let the discussion from the commission.
Is that the ask, Rick?
The ask is too big a warrant to allow us to use that one entrance, so that we can utilize all of the funds that we've been given by Port Housing to build 26 additional apartment units out there. And to reduce the parking, we learned over time that we don't need 2 and 1/2 spaces per unit, and the traffic study will also address that as well. We'd like that to lower to 1 and 1/2. And we'd also ask the city to help us as much as they can with fees as well, to reduce the dollars that have been awarded to us to put water in the house.
Okay, comments?
Are we talking about apartments, aisles?
Yes. Apartment similar was already there?
Yes, similar at all was already there, only out.
Okay, and then you're saying you don't want to put another entrance there, you want to keep just that one entrance?
Yes.
No, I don't agree with that. We already have enough traffic coming through that road right as is. In order to avoid even more congestion and traffic through that neighborhood, it has to be another entrance. And that's, that's how I feel about that entrance situation, so I like the apartment, the situation when you're talking about bringing more apartments in, but as far as just that one entrance, no, I don't agree with that.
All right. I think, and I agree with Mr. Langston on that, but I believe, I spoke to Jim yesterday, and I believe staff may have a recommendation that might, it's different than what was possibly original, but Jim, you want to share your recommendation on that second entrance?
Yes, sir. The initial development order called for additional entrance either on 71 or going back out to behind Commerce Park, based on feasibility and the cost, I don't think that's a good recommendation from staff. But we did look at the ingress and egress coming out to the initial interest way coming off Broad, and our thinking is, right now, with that additional parking lot, you're not going to have enough room for turnbays for emergency personnel, fire truck, and such type of things. I think it is that if you could kind of make it a loop parking lot, bring it back out to Clifford Sims, and then you could actually, if this would divert the traffic not strictly on Broad Street, that would come down Bay, some of the other streets, we believe there's a, that it's not going to be a very large leg or run, put in that additional section available there to add a second entrance as well.
We could really look at that and see if we're going to have enough funds to be able to do it. We still have to cross that coal around the front that I've been told to bridge, and it's definitely not an experience, but at the end of the year, we'll look and see if we can do that. We had been told that we would be able to get enough turnaround room in there by our engineers, but I think we would be able to do that, but when you go back to the client points...
And that was staff who made the decision that if you did not think that a second entrance was needed, at very least, you need that turnbais to maybe get a fire truck and just not do this again.
Is...
One more question, Mayor.
No, you name it. Is a second entrance, you think, a deal killer?
It very well could be, because these funds have already been allocated, there are hurricane funds that have come from the state, and they were matched to the 26 units and departments that we were going to build, and that's all the dollars that are available, and there's no way to go back and get any additional dollars from the state. So if we can't get it done, the money that's been allocated, then yes, it would be a deal killer for us.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Rick, I recognize, certainly we all recognize the need for additional housing right now. I'm not sure I'm on board with the 1 and 1/2 parking spaces, that opens up a giant can of worms for us down the road for future development, and so I'm not, I'm not on board with that. And also, it's not a good time to come to the city and asking for help as far as with fees. We're in disaster recovery mode, we're, our budget is tight, we're $80,000, about $80,000 down on Avalon, which will be carried through next year, we won't be bailed out by Trump next year, so I just, I'm going to have a problem with that. And with that being said, also, we spent a lot of time with you guys back before you built the other, with public hearings and workshops, and I think it's important for the neighbors in that neighborhood to be aware of what might be coming down the line. So I don't, I don't feel like right now we can fast-track anything without a certain amount of transparency and communication with the folks that are going to be affected in that neighborhood. So we've still got a little work to do, I think, but, you know, we need the housing, but we also can't afford to give away too much at the same time.
But we're glad to work with you, and try to provide the housing that's out there, and it's a matter of dollars for us at this point.
Us too.
Yeah.
Rick, I have a, I can, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for you, Rick, what would be the value of this building when completed? What's the project cost anticipated?
It's right at $8 million, I believe, $7 to $8 million.
So I will say this, Mayor, if you take those numbers, that's ad forum dollars that you won't be getting if this project doesn't happen, whereas we could give a little bit upfront on the impact fees that we can't spend on general fund, and have that money brought in on the ad forum side. I don't, I don't see it as even a wash, I see it as a gain. I see it as something that we have determined is one of our number-one problems in this community today is housing. I think that, you know, we do have an existing project to kind of base these traffic studies on. Most of these traffic studies are guessing games, but now we actually have a parking lot with 50 units, where they can count the cars in it, and they can count the cars that are leaving and coming in. So I think that there's something to be said, it isn't really a can of worms, this is an extension of an existing project. I'm for it 100% Rick, and I'm sorry that it doesn't sound like you've got the sentiment of the board, but I'd hate to be the one to tell those families, "Hey, you know, sorry, maybe next time when we don't have to help."
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I understand what Commissioner Ashbrook's saying, but how am I going to explain to those families that live in that neighborhood when this traffic is already bad? How am I going to explain to these families without another entrance that, what, pat them on the back and say, "Oh, it's going to be all right"? I know housing needs to be there, and it's important, but it's also important that the neighborhood that it's being built in know and understand what's going on, and I really think that in order to make it happen, it needs another entrance, and that's just the way I feel. It's nothing against you, it's nothing against the apartment complex, it's just, I want to make sure that the people in that neighborhood are okay.
Mike mentioned that that traffic study that you got there...
I saw the traffic study.
We directly asked the engineers that did that, go in and do the study, and make sure that we were asking for something that was reasonable, and I think it's covered in the... And I think it's covered in the traffic study.
Yeah, I saw the traffic.
But I hear what you're saying, and maybe the solution that Jim gave, you want to go maybe?
No, that won't do. That's not going to do it. It's going to have to be another entrance in order for me to vote for it. I don't know what the other, how the other commissioners feel about it, but that's just the way I feel about it right now.
Okay. I think we've brought up some good points from both sides. We can work together, work with Jim, and try to figure out a way that we can make this thing work. And so, we need it, and let's just see within your parameters of your budget and our parameters and our budget, maybe we can get this thing going.
And Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of that.
Yes, sir.
I agree, you can't have one entrance. It's already a problem down there with the units that are there. I'm going to support staff's recommendation, because the way I understood it, it would be a second entrance, correct, coming out at a different block?
Yes, sir. It still would come out on Clifford Sands, but yeah, staff recommendations to have a separate entrance, because if you have one main entrance, it's going to put all the traffic on Broad Street, at least at the right. So, I think it was that if you were having to come back out, you should be able to tie either one of the other roads that belong to express that traffic out, because you don't want that, I don't think you want to see that with traffic on Broad Street.
Right. I think it's a great idea. I believe everybody embraces the idea of additional affordable housing. But at the same time, let's call it what it is. On your side of it, it's a money-making project. You're in business to make some money. So, when you have an item that costs more money, either the developer has to pay for that item, or you hope you can convince the city to pay for it. So the other part of my support would be that the city's not going to be financially indebted for this project. You may not have as large of a profit margin, but you would have to share in paying the fees that normally would be paid. I am okay with the changing of the parking lot requirement. I would be okay with going to two, not one and a half. I think we need to get away from that half anyway, and just do it. Each unit has two. I'd be all right with that. But I think it's fair to say that we support it, but we also have to reach out and ask the people that are going to have a negative impact, and that's the traffic. And I will not support rushing this through without having the opportunity to workshop it and hear from the people wherever that new second entrance and exit would lie, because those people should be involved in the process too.
Understood. Thank you. Mayor, I have one question for staff. Jim, didn't we give some subsidy to an affordable housing company across the street from the high school just last year?
The other company that did it, the state funding was awarded, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was a 25% credit towards that award, or not towards [inaudible] tax, towards impact fees. So there was a partial, but not a full.
Right, exactly. So just, Commissioner Hoffman, there has been a precedent, and I will say this as well, that the state this year tried to make it mandatory that municipalities waive all impact fees for affordable housing. So that is, again, one of those potentials down the line. But that's all I have, Mayor.
If I can make a suggestion, maybe if you run your numbers based on some of the ideas that we have here and working with you, I believe you can tell we're willing to work with you.
Oh, yeah. And look, that is exactly what we'll have to do at this point, is to get our engineers and architects and engineers, folks, and let's see if we can figure out what, put some real dollars to it to understand what the impact to our project would be. The one other thing that I would say is, the profit margin per se is slim to begin with, but what can happen is that dollars amount of construction of the apartment units is imposed to the site work, if you will. So, we just have to all work through it, see what we can do to try to utilize the funds that have already been branded now. So those funds are available and ready, we're ready to use as soon as we can figure out how to make it work.
My second item to that is workshop and it, just like most of the commissioners mentioned. I mean, we need the community's input, and they deserve that. So, I definitely want to see that after he brings something back.
And well, Mayor, for clarity, this was just to kind of get a feel of the board. There's still the developmental process and everything that would traditionally happen. This is like a pre-planned phase. So, we're not trying to do any doing.
We didn't want to spend the money to do all of the architecture and all of the engineering based on one drive or two drives at this point until we knew what y'all would and would not go along with. And if that's the case, we're standing. We'll do our best to figure it out and do what you're asking us to do with the funds that we have available.
That's great. And as soon as you get with Jim and you guys get something you can bring back to us that we can publicize the workshop and we'll start moving forward.
Oh, really?
All right. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, Jim.
Yes, sir. The tire center development order request. The tire center has already went to the planning board. They have been given grants or given an exception for the use to have the tire center there. Did get preliminary approval from the planning board. Recommendation is to grant it for the new tire center.
All right, gentlemen, you've got engineered drawings, the architectural drawing in front of you. It's been approved by the planning board. I noticed owner, Mr. Ferguson's here, and engineers are here if you guys have questions. I've got one. It's more from Mark than it is engineers. It is more of a request than a question for Mark if you'll sign in. And this, guys, for you guys, it's on the architectural drawing page. I call it architectural, but it's really for the engineers. Just picture what, you know, all the elevations, front, side, back, and all that. Mark, on the front elevation, right over the door, there's just a little overname looking thing there, whatever you want to call it, brood. I think it would look a whole lot better from the street if you just had a, like, a small haunting over that, like a lot of folks already didn't see all of it.
We had 100% finalized that facade.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And the three windows, are they mock windows?
Shutters.
Okay, so it'd be like a Bahamas shutter type scenario?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd look good. It sure would. That was any more?
I'm looking for the parking there.
Up front, out back.
And you're going to have it in front? How many, on both sides?
Up front is four and one. Four and one, something out back.
Mark, it's glass?
Yeah.
There you go.
It'll be on C3.
Sign in two, please, sir, if you don't mind for the record.
There'll be a total of seven parking spaces, four up front, one being a handicap space, and three gravel parking spaces in the rear of the building, or employee parking.
Oh, I see them in the right corner, or the left. A right corner.
Right, right.
Really don't for bad.
And to have your vehicle serviced, you would enter in from the back, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, and that was a great idea.
That's what we needed.
Okay, go ahead.
What assurances can we have that it doesn't wind up, like, under the bridge in front of BJ's?
Because I don't do all the repairs. I don't change motors and trains.
They're in and out. You're not storing vehicles overnight?
You know, there's a gate, and somebody that you can dare whatever, but they don't sit there for three months.
Thank you. Sorry, BJ.
No offense.
Any more questions from Mark or the engineers? Is there a motion to accept the development order?
So, you tell them, Rick.
Second.
Captain Fisher and Hopper made a motion. Commissioner Ashbrook, second. Any more discussion? All in favor, I hope, same sign. Good luck, Mark.
Appreciate it.
Get you off the course a while.
Mayor, the next item we have is the Housing Resources Fair. The Northport St. Joe PAC, it put a flyer in here inviting everyone out to the Housing Fair that they are coming.
Okay.
I'm here to represent the Northport St. Joe Project Area Coalition and give you an update as far as our Housing Resource Fair. The Housing Resource Fair will be September 14th at Centennial Hall from 9:00 to 4:00. Some participants will be USDA, and because of the influx of money to the county ship program, we're hopeful that they'll be there so that everyone can get some information on some of those new opportunities through the ship brands. We also have some lenders who will be there. We want it to be very comprehensive, so we have education and career. Career Source will be there as well as Gulf Coast Community College Careers. Lenders, builders, we have other nonprofits that provide assistance with weatherization and home repair and utilities. And so, we're looking for about 15 to 20 vendors to be there. We're going to serve food, and we're shooting for 200 people. We're going to send everything out to, we already have through the chambers, through the chambers to Franklin and Gulf Counties to participate.
Questions? Have you already reserved a Centennial with the city? You've gone through all of those.
Yes, we jumped through those hoops. We had to do that right away. And the reason for this quick turnaround is that FEMA, some partners from FEMA brought this Housing Fair concept to our, a meeting that we were at, and it sounded like something that could really benefit the area, and they're pulling out at the end of September. And so, we needed their technical assistance, and so, we kind of turned this around really quickly, but hopefully it'll be successful and everyone will get some resources around housing.
Just one comment, and if you haven't already, and I'm sure you have, I had a lot of conversations this week with people about housing. They said the number-one thing they run into, even with the ship money available, you still have people that can't afford to finance the rest. So credit counseling is the one recommendation they always gave me. Make sure you have those programs available.
Okay. We do have some lenders there, and USDA will be there to talk about some of the programs that are under their umbrella, under HUD. And so I hope that, yeah, we can reach out to some credit counseling as well. I think there's a program called Wealth Watchers that we'll reach out to and see if we can't get them there as well.
It's a good resource.
Yeah. And the one question I have is, I don't know with that many people at a city building, if we need some sort of police law enforcement presence, if that should be something that we consider.
We defer to the chief on that.
Chief.
Do you want someone there the entire time, or just checking on?
I would hope that we're in a place that we didn't need anybody there. But I don't know what, I don't know what the legalities are for it as far as using city property and having that many people in one space. I don't know.
Jim, do we have a requirement for?
Normally, we defer to the actual VNSF to make sure they have a security plan, so depending on how many people you've got, what I would recommend is putting together a security plan for the VNSF, you know, how many people you have represented to the chief.
Okay. All right. And then, the other thing would be is making sure that the city, the bathrooms and things like that have appropriate amounts of, you know, supplies. All right?
We'll make sure of that.
All right.
Thank you for putting it together. It's great that you're going.
I'm hopeful. This will be our first one, so we'll see how it goes.
I just want you to put out there that this event is totally free.
It's free, yes.
Okay, I just want to, because there's some people concerned about, do they have to pay anything? I just want you to put it out there, let them know that it's free.
It is free, yes. And, yeah, we want as many families to be able to participate as possible. We'll be reaching out to Highland View, Mexico Beach. The advertising will start tomorrow, as soon as we have all of the partners listed and their logos on the advertising, so.
Very good.
Okay. The other thing is that my fellow PAC member asked me to ask the council to consider waiving the fee for the Centennial Hall, since it's a free, kind of a community resource type of program on behalf of the city. Anyway, I'm just asking you to consider that.
What is the fee? For a nonprofit, $100?
Well, we actually paid $350 to hold the building, and we were told we get $200 of that back, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, you have two details we would like to mention. Legislative requests, our legislative delegates have indicated that they would like for us to submit our request early November, so we're beginning to think together as to what you would like for requests this year from the legislature.
And when do they need that from us?
First of November is when we've been asked for from our office.
Do they need shovel-ready plans or conceptual, what do they need?
No, sir, there's actually an application that we fill out. We're very familiar with it, so it's about a seven or eight-page application. So at this point, you just need to try to determine a project that's feasibly ready, but it does not have to be totally shovel-ready.
I'll throw my two cents worth out right now. I think we need to get everything we can for Long Haven, and that project needs to be priority for us. And so, whatever, I think I remember hearing you say that Senator Monford thought that $900,000, $1 million range would be something that might be doable?
With, some of the delegates are indicating, they have several counties they have to take care of, but long ago, there was a whole, maybe two dollars been asked. What if we went back and broke it up with the lift station, which is vital to the whole town, that's your major hub there? Staff at this point is considering that probably is our biggest recommendation.
Comments, questions?
We can do it. Mr. Mayor, we may can hit that on the CDVG side on Long Avenue, when that, we start, disaster money starts coming. Those grants and getting our consultant to apply on that end of the CDVG.
Wonderful.
That's been my idea.
Yeah, I like it. If we concentrate on long, we can go a long way to our main artery, to all our schools, so it's important, important street for us.
Absolutely. We give us what your recommendations are, and we'll bring it back to you in the next board meeting. The last item we have is moving forward with your budget. September the 3rd is scheduled for your first hearing at 6:00. Consideration adoption is September the 17th at 5:01. The meeting has been held after 5:00. Your normal scheduled meeting, by the new meeting times, that would be a 12:00 meeting. So if we want to move the 12:00 meeting, that would be scheduled on the 17th of September, do you want to move or start everything at 5:01, along with your vote? What's the recommendation?
That's good. We're taking a long time. Yeah, we can do all of it at 5:01. Yeah. Reschedule that meeting from noon to 5:01, and we'll take your budget. Yeah. Reschedule that meeting from noon to 5:01 and we'll take your budget and our regular meeting at 10:00. And also remember we had scheduled a workshop, budget workshop for August 27th, which is a week from today, at noon. So some items we need to go over, make sure we're all on board and so we'll be ready for the 3rd.
Yeah, if y'all could just email that out, those dates.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions, comments from Jim? Okay, Public Works, John's not here. I know he's one man down and they're trying to finish up Jones Homestead. And so you want to take lead on Public Works?
I can, Mayor. We're moving back to Jones Homestead by the end of week. We figure it's going to take us three to four weeks to finish that project and then we will move him back to the drains between 6th and 7th Street. That's the two major projects that we need to finish up next month.
Okay. Any questions? Public Works?
I've got some, Jim, I know that we have some positions open just for Public Works. And I know it's important that we fill them. How's that process going?
Currently, right now, he has, I believe, two openings. For an operator and? Mr. Pierre said that they, Pierre has closed. They are reviewing applications.
Great, that's cool.
Okay, Surface Water Plant, Mr. Larry, you've got some handouts for us.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
You get mine.
Oh, sorry.
That's as far as you can.
As far as we got. Okay. You were given a handout with the bid results for chemicals at the water plant. This was requested by the mayor. On page two of your handout for each chemical, there's a price comparison between the current gender and the low bid. Also included is staff recommendations. Sodium hypochlorite and caustic soda, we would like to accept. There's some cost savings we did. Phytic sulfate remained the same.
So Larry, what, you know, I appreciate you doing this work and I asked Larry to do it, but our chemical budget's just ridiculous and we're trying to get it under control. He had a little luck with two of the chemicals, main chemicals we use and it's going to end up saving us about how much in a year's time?
Close to $20,000.
Right, $20,000, which is, I think, about 10% of what we spent last year, which was 200. So that's great. We can keep working on it throughout the year and maybe we can figure out some other ways to cut costs on treating our water.
And I'll ask you a question.
Questions, if you want. Okay.
We just need to accept.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
To accept Univar USA for caustic soda and ally form for sodium hypochlorite.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Ashbrook, second by Commissioner Langston. Any other discussion, comments? All in favor, aye? Oh, same sign. That's good. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kevin, you got, you going to spend Larry's money?
Apparently I could find it. We've postponed all our project work. There's different projects we had this past year.
Close.
So, okay. So we've been running a duck payment and baiting our, you know, making sure we've got enough money to put everything back together. So what we've got is, I've got below or 79,000 in my budget that I haven't spent. That was on the project work that I had. I'd like to take all of that and put it where we're being hit hardest, which is filters. So I can almost get all the filters that I need for what's in the budget. I think that gets us a long way down the road. If we don't replace filters, we'll replace pumps. So what I'm trying to do is keep from replacing the $25,000 pumps, you know, because we're limping now. It's, it's what we've looked at. It's already in the budget. I'm just not, I don't spend it where I had tagged it last year. I need to put it where we're leading now.
And the filters or the lagoon?
It's the filters that I took our lagoon water before it goes to our spray paint.
Those stainless steel filters you're talking about?
Right. We bought, right after hurricane, we picked up 100 of those. There's 1,008 filters altogether. So we get below or 600 by what I've got in my budget now. So we're real close to having between the nylon that we've got that's still in good shape and the stainless, back into normal running conditions with that piece of the system.
Very good. Questions for Kevin?
How long do those filters last?
Now, nylons, they say they last about five years, depending on what you filter through and how often you clean them. Cleaning's kind of hard on them. The stainless should last about double that. So they think they last forever, but they're not. You know, they're metal. Eventually, you're going to see some degradation in your metal and pieces that put them together. They're saying now that they should at least give us double the life of the nylon. For $10 more filter, I think it's the right way to go.
Absolutely, I agree.
Yep.
Any further comments? There are a motion for a change on his line item in his budget to purchase the disk filters.
So moved staff recommendations.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion, comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay.
That's all I've got on this part of my topics. It picks us up a little.
Good, thank you. I appreciate you for that. Thank you, sir, too. Okay, Mr. Mike?
Mayor, as you stated, we do have a budget workshop set for August 27th at noon. We have the draft budget, but we're waiting to see if Dwight can come up with some numbers from the health insurance providers before we push that out. But we'll certainly get you a copy of that before Friday so that you'll have that to review for the Tuesday workshop. Other than that, FEMA and insurance is still moving along and those processes continue to work nicely.
Good, good deal. If you can't get Dwight to get anything concrete, he usually has a pretty good feel for which way things are going. Could you at least maybe get him to say, I think it'll be?
Absolutely. Yeah, we have 5% in there now, but I will confer with him and see if we can get some idea of the number before that.
Right, very good.
But everything else is in good shape as far as the budgets, considering that we're ready to move forward.
Thank you. Any more questions for Mike? Okay, thank you. Mr. Clay, City Engineer?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. I don't really have any updates. I have the estimate for the Clifford Sims Park paving we talked about last week. I'll have it for you at your next meeting. She already decided to vote on it. But unless there are questions for me, I don't have anything for you.
Do you have like a ballpark guess what that project might would cost?
I think it'd be less than $100,000.
It is?
I think so.
Well, I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve paving the Clifford Sims Park to include the shoulders. And then if we have money left over, then we can tackle where that needs to go. We've been talking about these roads for months now. I think it's time to make a decision. Clifford Sims Park is tore up from one end to the other and that's an area that is utilized every day, but.
Yep.
So I'll make the motion that we approve the paving, not to exceed the money, I think it's what, $58,000?
It's about $88,000.
Oh, yeah. Well, there we go. $88,000. If we don't spend it, we'll look at where to spend the other.
All right, okay. Listen, I can miss you, second by Commissioner Ashbrook, to spend the remaining road bond money on paving Clifford Sims Park. Further discussion on that?
I've got one thing. Are there, there's no curb ribbon around that or anything? Would that include the parking right there? Yeah, it would include all the asphalt. Really? Because they described it. Yes, and scribing them? Absolutely. We definitely want to scribe it too.
Perfect. Very good. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Post carries five, oh. When will we get lights on the trail?
The trail, yeah, that's a good one. Been working with Mr. Kennedy on, kind of through the PSGRA for your master plan down there. So that drawing is coming together. That's part of this, is the court park. And then the lighting is the other component of that, obviously, with Duke Energy. So we, I hope over the next couple of weeks, we'll have court park figured out and we'll be able to at least get that part out of bid or however you want to get it constructed and get that part of the trail back. And then I'll follow up with Duke Energy. I have to be honest, I don't know where we left off. I don't remember where we left off with them on the lighting, but I know we had conversations with them in pre-store to get lights. The goal was to get lights between 20th and Elementary School. That was the goal of what we had discussed with them. So we'll bring some of that with them too.
Right, okay. And while we're talking about trail, to tie you into Public Works somewhat, the bridge that I think John sent out a bid for aluminum bridge, I think he found something that would be really aesthetically nice as well as long, have a long life for a reasonable amount of money. And so hopefully that'll come soon and that'll take care of at least getting folks back on the trail, you know, for its entirety.
Yes, sir. I believe the bid closes on Friday, Mayor, and we've had quite a bit of interest. There's several companies out there that make similar products, so we think we'll have several bids by then.
Right, very good. Thank you. Thanks, Clay.
Yes, sir.
All right, code enforcement. Richie's been very busy and so hopefully we won't have to go to special master. Hopefully folks will just clean up the property on their own without us really making them do it. But anyway, I think his schedule was in everyone's box, so if you need to call him, you know, face to face, the schedule for this month is in your box, so moving along with that. Mr. Matt, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything on the agenda. Does the board ask questions for me?
Scarlet, uh, Scarlet season's here and I think you know the debacle we had on Saturday and I appreciate your guys getting out there and directing traffic, but that's something that we're certainly going to have to look at in the future. It fell on soft air market and as well as the Scarlet Festival opening day. We're going to have a problem down there one of these days if we hadn't already had several. We've got limited parking and I think all of us need to kind of look several years down the road. If the church ever decides they're going to demolish and sell to the developer, we'll lose that parking and then we're really going to have to make some hard decisions on, do we limit the number that goes down there? What can we do? But I'd like everyone to start thinking along those lines a little bit. So that's, looks good.
It was a mess Saturday morning, if you saw it.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, but thank you, your officers for taking care of that. Mr. City Clerk, do you have anything today?
Ms. Charlotte, I have a list of some questions.
Questions from Ms. Charlotte, anyone?
Thank you.
Citizens to be heard. I know there's some folks out there would like to come up and tell us what a good job we're doing and so who would like to be the first to do that today? I see a hand in the back.
Christie, McElroy, Woodward Avenue, you are doing a good job and I really do look forward to those workshops concerning the Nerd A Brand. Now, I am going to enter something into the record that I do have concerns about that I didn't put in the contract. I think we need to look at proper people, proper businesses for proper tax. I don't know if you guys picked up the Democrat over the weekend, but these investigations continue and it's now touching Gulf County. So where it comes to local preference, when I look at local preference, I think about companies that actually, you know, they have headquarters here. And so Preble Rich no longer has headquarters here. Those headquarters are out of Virginia and I'm very concerned about how that article can impact us now and in the future when it comes to corruption. So I would urge y'all to look at that article and we, as I said, need to make sure that there are no conflicts of interest. So people that have partnerships, business partnerships with other people that do contracts with us, we need to make sure that they're not voting in that situation. So I'm going to enter those things into the record as well as, again, I'm sorry that we had to put an agreement about co-mingling of funds, but due to the evidence that was out there, it needed to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll let her sit down. Okay, come right up. Thank you. Oh, there you go. Yes, ma'am. And please state your name too, so Ms. Charlotte can hear.
Rose Mary Lewis, 1015 Monument. You're doing a heck of a job because this meeting's only taking an hour, so I'm sorry. I'm following up a little bit about the code enforcement issue and I know that's kind of a done deal and all that, but I just wanted to make a few comments about that. I had spoken to Jim because my lot on Monument was demoed before Christmas. You know, it's now growing grass. I talked to Jim about what are the parameters in terms of getting fined for just having grass or whatever and Jim said, well, it looked pretty good when I saw it, but I know it's growing. Then I did speak to Ms. Charlotte and voiced my opinions with her. One of the issues was you had talked about putting out the letter on your utility bill. Why don't we get utilities? So.
We're, Ms. Rosemary, we're going to work on that.
Okay.
Also, Jim's going to get with the property president office to get addresses.
Right.
And so forth, because we do know there are landlords out there that rent property and they may get them, but also cases like yours, we understand.
Yeah, okay, good. Because I just wanted to, you know, I just wanted to see what the parameters were, you know, what the fines would be, you know, how high is the grass, too high? You know, I'm going to be an absentee, you know.
Yeah.
Type of person and all that stuff, so.
We, I think I would have to defer to Richie somewhat on heights and that type of thing, but once the lot's cleared, I think, you know, it's cleared and, you know, it's clear. But then when the grass grows up, waste aisle in there, it's not cleared anymore. So I think that's what he's looking at.
And I think in good faith, if I'm trying to, you know, I cleared the lot, had somebody come in and, you know, on a good day, we had all that equipment, but, you know, it was in our garage, so, you know, I'll keep trying to do that.
Thank you.
And then the other quick thing, just going forward, because now people think I've already left and left here, but I'm really not, but I really am. I'm just hoping, you know, because I do love this city, you know, I have that lot, I'm not rebuilding. I mean, you mentioned about that, I'm not rebuilding. I'll eventually sell it. I still have the property out in the county, you know, all that. I love this city and I'm very committed to moving forward. I know y'all have a plan and all of that. It's rebuild, but I just wanted to just put in my two cents about just growth and expansion. That I don't want us to be the type of place where it's kind of a lot of pushback for different plans, different growth and development types of situations. I know at the last meeting, when I was watching on my phone, it's where I'm in Georgia, there was a mention like about the Chevron station. Like the Chevron station is not aesthetically pleasing anymore because it's, you know, it's a mess. I saw the Chevron station as the place I bought my gas, where I got my cold drinks, where they have the hot food at night and all that good stuff and that was part of this city. And so I'm really kind of hoping, continuing on with that, that we keep how beautiful this city is, how wonderful this city is. this city is, how wonderful this city is, and just being aware of environmental concerns because I think that's truly important, too. And, you know, when I was running for city commission, the thing you always heard was, "Are you from here?"
Yeah.
And I would always say, "Who?" But, you know, I moved to Florida in 1960 and that really didn't matter. But anyway, you know, what I wanted to be, having bought that house, is I wanted to be generational, you know? I wanted to be the first generation, who handed off to my daughter, who handed off to her children, et cetera. That was the plan. So, I am super committed to anything that happens here going forward, our growth and development, because I've lived in other places where there's been good and bad about growth and development and what's happened and all that good stuff, so that's all I want. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And from my position, I think we've done well in the past and we'll do well in the future and we'll keep the same feel. It won't look the same, but the feel, I hope, will always be there. It's a great place for raising families. Okay, we have, come right up, sir.
Robert Grant, a little late, had to leave work. You get here, appreciate your time. I missed the part on the Nerd Grant. I really want to speak on behalf of what Northwest Florida had to say, but I actually wrote it. I said I wrote it and novel out pretty much like I did last time, so I'm just going to kind of speak.
Thank you.
Speak from my heart. I'm going to take a look, but between 10th and 16th Street, the Stormwater Canal, you know, it's been working for 60 years to keep our neighborhood well taken care of. Even during a category five hurricane, it saved our neighborhood, which I made that known and I'm going to quit repeating myself. I noticed in this plan, the Nerd Plan, y'all were planning on putting some retention bonds. Is that correct?
Nothing's set in stone yet, Robert. It mentioned retention bonds in that grant application, but nothing is set in stone.
Well, the reason I ask that, some pages have, they're final and some have draft on them and it's hard to tell what y'all already finalized and what is under draft.
To my knowledge, and somebody up here correct me if I'm wrong, but to my knowledge, there have not been any plans for that money.
The way I see it, when you put a draft out, you pretty much take in and put out what you want to. Now, something, you sit there looking at one page and then you go to a draft page.
I understand.
You don't know what thing.
Yeah.
But, so, I just want to caution y'all on piping that Stormwater Canal, title ribbon. And according to what I'm seeing, what y'all planning on doing, you're starting at 10th Street, off the cover of that ditch, piping the ditch behind our neighborhood.
No, the grant, that's not true.
The piping plans, what I have, that's what it shows. All I know is what's on paper. You can put anything on paper.
Robert, let me help you a minute. The grant says that we cannot do anything in the 10th Street area.
That's actually...
And so, there won't be any piping, but we can move on, we understand.
Rex, I appreciate you saying that. That's actually the paper that says draft on it. That's the paper I'm on. Page eight, I believe.
That, I'll say the citizens were heard in that regard, meaning your neighborhood, that voiced their concerns to Northwest Florida Water Management and they heard that and therefore that's, as far as I know, is a dead issue.
Okay, you said it's a dead issue. You're saying that they're telling y'all they're not going to pipe, but that's what you tell them?
They don't tell us what to do. They just tell us how to spend the money, but...
So, you're saying, you're telling me with this, excuse me, you're telling me with this forehead in the Nerd Grant, y'all had it on paper for two years, the piping plan, I have it if I need to go get it, and you still know what you want to do then? That's not good planning.
But anyway, that's three minutes, Robert.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Good launch. Nope, nope, anybody? State your name, sign in, please, sir.
Robert Labris, Cleveland, Florida, B, Port St. Joe, Florida. He's very short and brief. Yeah. And I want to thank you guys for all the work you guys have been doing. I do appreciate what you have been doing and will continue to do. My only question is, I've been listening to the news about the water in the housing and plant as well as now you see New Jersey. And the question I want to present before the board today, and that is, I know about a year or so ago, it was brought up about the water conditioning coming into the housing, especially for some houses who are, well, pipe, I think, around in the 60s, late, I mean, early 70s or prior. Is the water condition still good in those houses? Do those houses still need to be repiped? But I know it was brought up about repiping and I think it was said from the board that it is the residents' responsibility to pipe it from the meter to the house. Well, we know that in many cases, some of those citizens over there, North Port St. Joe, I don't know about over here in South Port St. Joe, but I want to speak for the whole city, not just for North Port St. Joe. We got some senior citizens living in some of those houses that may not be able to afford. Have we considered retesting the water level and see the need to be repiped before we be having a New Jersey or Flint condition down here in Port St. Joe? Will we add on that? I know we've brought up...
Well, you would have to test the water from inside the house and I think Larry's department has a method that you can accommodate folks if they think they have too much iron or whatever, and they'll provide the testing glasses, jars, whatever, and they'll look into that.
Okay.
Give Mr. Larry and/or Jim and he'll, he can help you with that.
And for those residents who may not be able to afford because of the fixing, you know, income level, or there can be any kind of program that we can assist them in any kind of way, block, grant, et cetera.
I think that's what the ship program's on about.
The ship program will be...
Yeah, and of course, the housing workshop that the PAC put together, there'll be some resources there, I'm sure.
I just want to make sure that Port St. Joe don't get any news like New Jersey or something like that. That's my concern, yeah. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, appreciate it, Mark. Okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay? Discussion items. Where did I start last week? Over here or down? We'll start with Commissioner Langston.
I just, when we come, we were talking about rebuilding. I just think that we need to be patient and not just rush into something that looks good and sounds good and is not good for our citizens. That's why I'm so concerned about this apartment complex, well, the addition to this apartment complex in that neighborhood. It's not that I don't want housing, I just think it's our job to protect our citizens. And in order to do that, we need to understand actually what's going on with the situation before we just jump in suddenly. That's what my concern was, was that. It wasn't that I didn't want it, it's just that in that area, it's, I know because I'm there and I see the traffic, I see the speeding. And if you don't add another entrance to that, that it's going to be some kids to get run over and then we got another problem, you know? So, that's my thing with that. Another thing is, if anybody's watched the news, you see the flooding over in Panama City. I think that one of the issues is, that's why I was pushing, getting our covers and ditches and everything cleaned out before we see anything like that. And also, we need to understand that it's a lot of trees that's gone and those trees actually suck a lot of that water up and to stop a lot of flooding that's happening. So, it's really important that we try to get these ditches and covers cleaned up in order to, for the water to flow like it should flow. That's all I have, man.
Commissioner Ashbrook?
And Eric, I do respect what you said about, you know, making sure that the people are aware. I just, I have a very strong feeling that traffic is not the problem, it's abuse of traffic, you know, and I think enforcement is the key. And I would hope that we could tackle those issues on an enforcement level, but you can't do that with one officer on a call and only one officer on the street. On that same note, with the issue of speed bumps that was brought up last week, kind of sounded like that was the can of worms. And so, I did some shopping on the market floor this last week and found some alternatives and I don't know if we want, a staff was looking at the cost of speed bumps, I think brought that back. Jim, they make a, just a portable sign that's got two batteries, one lasts for a week, the other lasts for a week. You charge one and then you switch them out. $2,500 and you can move it to the problem areas. Chief had said that, you know, he can patrol those areas more frequently. That is a lot cheaper solution. You can move it to events, if there's events in certain areas, we can move it as well. It just flashes, you know, lights on the top and it tells you how fast you're going. May or may not work. It's a lot cheaper than speed bumps to find out. And the other thing, you hit on a good point again here. When you're there, you notice the problem, when you're not, you don't. The alleys behind Reed Avenue have become absolutely insane. There are trucks parked bumper to bumper, doing deliveries and they'll sit there and they park. I watched one get out of his truck, parked right in the alleyway and go into Joe Muhammad's and have a pizza. I'm like, you can't do that. I think the intent of those streets going along the sidewalk perpendicular to Reed were supposed to be where the delivery trucks parked, but if you look, when you're driving down those streets, it says no trucks. That was supposed to be no trucks on Reed Avenue and we've confused the truck drivers. Now that we've reversed the flow on some of those streets and they can drive straight through to Williams, I think that we need to somehow put out a pamphlet or something that we can give to these businesses, to hand to these truck drivers and say, "This is where you need to be." Make it a lot easier and if there's only a couple dozen trucks that make the same deliveries every day, we can get the word out, but it is a terrible, terrible problem. And the bad thing is, now it's one way, so when you're stuck behind these trucks, you have to break the law to get out of the situation. So, if we can figure something out on that, I'd appreciate it. And then boat parking, Rex, you're right, it was crazy. I got two calls this weekend about the parking. And then I started thinking creatively about it and I said, "Well, there's a bank probably for sale pretty soon and a restaurant right next to that, we could have a really nice place." Anyway, just food for thought. That's all.
Commissioner Lang?
I don't have anything for that.
You're missing out.
The only thing I wanted to bring up is also the boat landing parking. I think we need to start tackling this now instead of later. One of the ideas that I spoke to someone that called me about it was maybe the city could offer city employees, starting with the city police department, some overtime. I don't know if you have staffing that would accommodate that or to talk to Richie and see if he's interested in increasing his allowed hours, but I heard that it was chaotic, but then I also heard that thanks to FWC personnel being there and the sheriff's department and the city police department, it was maintained chaos. So, to me, that sounds like the first thing we have to do is keep that person or persons there. So, I would like staff to start maybe speaking to the department heads and see if there's someone within the city that would like to work that day for overtime or just a flat fee. If we could get something like that started and that person could maybe be in a safety vest and help with parking. You could also do a count. I'd like to know the actual count. Jim told me today that I believe it was 110 people paid on Saturday. At some point, we have to ask ourselves, how many people can we accommodate parking? And we have to do what the state park has done for years, what Cressnell's has done for years, and we have to come up with a fair number of spaces that we can actually park and then we stop and we close the landing. That's the only way you can do it. Now, I will follow up and say that I am only going to support and will always support people from first, Port St. Joe, second, Gulf County, having those spots to park in. I hate it, but I'm not in the position to speak for the other areas. That parking lot is, and that boat landing is owned by the city residents of Port St. Joe and I want to emphasize that, that when we start limiting or thinking about cutting out, launching at a certain point, that we focus on allowing our people to be the first ones that can launch a boat and enjoy the parking in the area.
Very good. Anything else?
That's all I have, thank you.
The only thing I have is, I appreciate everyone coming to these meetings and I appreciate your interest in our city. And with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.